Council to join us up here on the dais, that would be great. And we will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jirojigi. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacy of settler colonialism. And, let's see. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Molton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I think we're fighting for the mute button there.
No problem.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contrares Deloche is absent. And Mayor Bregel?
In the building.
She's here, but not present, okay.
And I'm here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a report out of closed session? City Attorney Black?
No final actions or reports from closed session.
Thank you. All right, that moves us to Mayor's announcements, childcare needs assessment with Alana Smith. Come on up. Welcome. Is the green light on?
There you go.
All right, there we go. Hi, everyone, I'm Alana Smith. I'm the Director of Operations with the California Center for Rural Policy at Cal Poly Humboldt, and I'm here with my colleague Nino D. today, who will come up shortly to talk about the Humboldt County Childcare Needs Assessment conducted by our organization.
Is this good where you want it?
Oh, I can't see it. Yeah. I was like, where am I looking? Yes. All right, there we go. Yes, I'm gonna get started and I'm gonna pass it off to my colleague, Nino. Let's see, the clicker. You just do next. Thank you. Great. Just a little bit about this project and how CCRP got involved. So this work was originally funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA dollars awarded to the county of Humboldt in 2022. So the project as a whole is now known as the Humboldt County Childcare Stabilization Fund. And this initiative has provided financial support to so many childcare providers and families across the county. The funds are being distributed and the program is being led by North Edge, and we have Susan Seaman here, our colleague, and her amazing team have been working to distribute the funds in many different ways, and there's an outline of that, all the different ways the program is working in the report, which you have a copy of here. And so CCRP, we are a research and policy center, and so we are brought in to help conduct a needs assessment, just to try to understand the unique needs of childcare in Humboldt County and assess where there are gaps and where there may be room for new policy changes or collaboration between our local community partners. And so we started by gathering data on the current childcare industry and needs, and then generated that needs assessment. In order to do that, we worked with our local childcare partners, as well as educators and business employers, and we created this needs assessment. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it off to my colleague, Nino, to talk about the report.
Yo, Alana. Hello, my name is Nino D., and I work as a Senior Research Analyst at Cal Poly, CCRP at Cal Poly. And you have needs assessment forty-page report, which I'll try to present in six slides. So the report is structured the following way. First, there is a community context, understanding specific numbers about Humboldt, then the current state of childcare in Humboldt County, where we present industry overview, availability issues, accessibility issues, affordability issues, and how it all sums up through economic costs. And then, at the end, we have policy recommendations. But for today's presentation, I'm gonna start backwards. I'm gonna present policy recommendations and then show you what they're based on. There you go. So we collected primary and secondary data. Primary data we collected through survey, through childcare access survey, which were distributed to parents, and in total, we had 459 responses, and 20-plus industries were represented through this survey. We also had one-on-one interviews with childcare providers, licensed childcare providers, and we also did listening sessions with provider network. In addition to that, then I dived into secondary data, academic articles mostly, which I love, and some reports, and some data sources. So everything that I will present today is based on this specific data. So there are six policy recommendations, and I'll be talking about each of these, and I have a feeling nothing that I'll say today will be of a big surprise to you. Obviously, to expand availability and accessibility, engage employers as partners, and I think this is very unique finding for this assessment, and I'll be talking about it a little bit more. Enhance affordability, strengthen the childcare workforce, expand accessibility for children with special needs, because that was the theme that emerged a lot in the interviews, and simplify access to childcare subsidies and financial assistance. So, why we recommended to expand availability and accessibility? So 41% of potential childcare demand, only 41% is met, based on the numbers of how many children are in Humboldt County 026 and how many available, licensed available spots are there. So it's almost, like, 59% is unmet need. So there's a huge accessibility gap there. Infant care is especially limited, and especially in more rural areas in southern Humboldt. And 55% of families who were surveyed stated that they wanted non-traditional service hours, hours like weekends, evenings, or more part-time service options. So based on that, we proposed to provide grants and tax incentives to increase the number of licensed facilities and programs, to diversify care options, of course, and to develop employer-sponsored childcare partnerships. And I'll talk about that a little bit more right now. We also added some of those quotes that parents decided to share with us in a survey. And I just wanted to underline this, we had 459 responses, I guess, and then almost third of participants decided to leave additional comments. You know how you fill out the survey? And at the end, it says, "Do you have additional comments?" And almost, like, one-third of the respondents wanted to tell us something more. And to me, as a researcher, it shows how urgent parents feel their needs are, right? They wanted to share their stories. So some of those quotes you'll see on slides. So that it's just not a number, that it's like how that number actually feels in real life, in someone's real life. So we proposed to, like, as a policy recommendation, we proposed to engage employers as partners. And there's a big reason why. When parents cannot have access to childcare, 46% of our survey participants said that if they cannot have access to childcare, they miss work. And then 28% said that someone else in their household misses work. And that, in total, on average, research states that costs $1,150 per working parent annually, based on a UC Berkeley study, and that improving childcare access can reduce employee absenteeism by 20 to 30%, and lower turnover rates, right, from 37 to 60%. That's also pretty large numbers. But that's how much local employers are missing and losing when their workers cannot come to work because, their employees cannot come to work because they have nowhere to take their child. So we proposed this partnership between employers and employees, and we propose the following strategies: to offer flexible work arrangements, which is sometimes, when possible, remote work, because that's what parents are also asking; increase and adapt leave policies so that if families, if workers have children, so in addition to their own sick leave days, they can get some extra child sick leave days, for example; provide childcare financial support, and build or partner with childcare providers. And there's very good example, which you would see in the report, in Appendix B and C, there's partnerships that are working pretty successfully in Humboldt County. And one of those partnerships is Little Semplings and the city of Eureka, which offers its employees access to childcare with full tuition coverage, and then they're schedule-aligned with Eureka City Council's district calendar. So it's much easier for parents, because they know when will they have those specific days when they'll need care. The second such cooperation is happening between little learners and open-door community health centers, and then open door gets priority access to childcare, and then little learners benefit from a stable enrollment, because they know beforehand how many children will be enrolled. A little bit more how those partnerships work, how those were developed, what challenges they're still facing, and how they're navigating those challenges, you'll find in the report in, again, Appendixes B and C, which I think is very interesting. Affordability. Definitely affordability is one of the biggest challenges that parents face. So childcare costs take up to 43% of median income in household, compared to 30% of California average and 27% of national average. And what is even more shocking, I think, is the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services actually recommends that childcare costs do not exceed 7% of family income. Childcare costs, so it's even worse for single parents, single mothers, because childcare costs consume 74% of single mothers' median income in Humboldt compared to statewide average of 60%. So based on these recommendations, we propose to increase reimbursement ceilings, to expand financial assistance eligibility to support families just above income cutoffs, because that also showed up in a lot of comments. Thank you. Strengthen childcare workforce. So childcare as industry, many providers and teachers look at the industry as temporary, which leads to high turnover rates, because childcare positions tend to be on the lower pay scale with limited benefits, if there are any benefits at all there. So we propose to increase wages and benefits, like healthcare, paid leave, retirement, and offer tuition assistance and scholarships to early childhood education professional development. Expand accessibility for children with special needs. Overall, in Humboldt County, 6% of households with children under 18 have at least one child with disability, compared to 3.8% of statewide. So it's higher, obviously. And there is growing need for trained staff as well. Parents were expressing their frustration how they could not find childcare places where their children with special needs would also be accepted. So we propose to increase funding for training childcare providers and teachers, of course, in addition to facility improvements, of course, for children with disabilities, different kind of disabilities. And the last one is to simplify access to childcare subsidies and financial assistance, because they're mostly underutilized because of more complex application and renewal process. So based on that, we propose to streamline subsidy process and to expand outreach and education to raise awareness, what's available for them. Thank you very much, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, thank you for this report. Long, long ago, I was a preschool teacher. Quick question, these are great policy recommendations. I'm curious who they're aimed for? You know, are you sharing these at the state level, or like, where do you see the most change being able to take place?
So our second policy recommendation was mostly focusing on businesses. We meet business representatives as well to show how their engagement and involvement can, I wouldn't say necessarily solve, but at least alleviate the burden and how much they can engage to help. So that would be one group of people for whom I think this would be pretty interesting to see, because reports talks in detail what's rate of return overall. And this morning, we had a meeting with the Board of Supervisors, so that they also understand which direction the money is needed, if there is available funding, I would say. Susan will tell more.
I figure since we ordered the report, yes, we are looking, these changes are not gonna happen at the local level, except for with really innovative, wonderful places like City of Eureka, who built their own childcare center. So those types of things are good, those partnerships are good, but yes, the recommendations are state and federal recommendations. It's really about getting everybody on the same page, so that everybody's making the same recommendations, so we have a unified voice.
Thank you.
I also see Mr. Fernandez has a question, I think.
Councilmember, were you done? Councilmember Castellano? Or did you? Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Yeah, very, very similar to Councilmember Castellano, and I think it's already been answered, is, this is being brought to us not only for our education, but also potentially to advocate or harangue our legislative reps at the state, correct?
Yes, you can say that. Yes, thank you.
Have you met with local business owners or any of the Chamber of Commerce's? Have you had these conversations with them?
We met with business owners, for sure. Susan will tell more.
I'll just hang out up there. So we had a business, it was actually really hard to get HR professionals, but we invited HR professionals to come to a luncheon, where we were able to present this information and gather ideas about what they're able to do in their own business setting. And then we also got to show off those two examples of what have been done locally, or maybe not two, maybe it was just the city of Eureka presented, and that was really insightful for a lot of people at that meeting, so.
And then, and then I'm curious, because you had said there's 55% of families approximately that need non-traditional service hours, hours for childcare, evenings, weekends. I know we have our little saplings program, but of course, that's very much in the same vein as traditional K through 12. So what do you see as a potential solution or alternative then for those non-traditional hours?
Right, I think there are family centers, which are more flexible, and I think they can provide more flexibility to families like that, rather than childcare centers, which may have more rigid schedules. But yeah, I would definitely say. Plus, there's also unlicensed FFN, right, family, friends and neighbor, right? And I think there's potential there, too, which would, in my understanding, would work very well for parents, especially with non-traditional hours, you know, staying late at work. There were some quotes from our survey where some parents were saying like, "Hey, I could work 12-hour shifts as a nurse, but I cannot afford it, because no one's gonna, I have no one to leave my child with," right? And then, so I would say, yeah, definitely licensed family homes and FFN.
Thank you, I couldn't unmute myself. No, I just wanted to say, thank you for that, and it sounds like I'm hearing, you know, more of that community, community building, that camaraderie, especially for some of those non-traditional hours, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
I haven't gotten a chance to dig into this, obviously, but I'm excited to, and thank you for bringing this, I really appreciate it. I am curious, and maybe it's in here, if there is already been some kind of calculation tool about how much this stability contributes to an employer's overall bottom line, and how much that instability for employees takes away from their, like, I remember they did a calculation on, you know, how much it costs when employees were underinsured, and I remember that that was put out at one point, and just the amount of problems and how that kind of contributed overall economically to businesses. I'm wondering if that same kind of thing is in.
Right. So there is nothing specific for Humboldt County, because that would be a different study, which should be done maybe with me, but someone who has more economic background and standing. But there is pretty good numbers on page 29, actually, and page 30, where actually, a study by the Boston Consulting Group in 2024 analyzed five companies across multiple industries and found that the childcare benefits yielded a return on investment of up to 425%. Notably, even retaining just 1% of eligible employees due to childcare support fully covered the cost of providing benefits to all eligible employees.
Thank you. I think that's the angle, right? I mean, to me, is it's demonstrating that this is a tangible benefit and would benefit bottom line. I hate that things have to be measured in that way, and not just, hey, this would make your employees' lives better, but that that would actually have a tangible financial benefit to the company as well as, and I've seen in other, I'd lived in larger cities, and I'd seen how some of them would do childcare, you know, facilities on ground floors or other things like that for their employees. And of course, like you said, City of Eureka does this, and it makes an incredible difference, I think, for, you know, moms or dads to be able to just go check on their child, or, you know, just to have that and know that they're in good care. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
And actually, the report starts with a reminder that childcare benefits children because of their socio-emotional and academic development, families because it allows both parents to work and increase their income. It also helps families by having better work-life balance, for a lot of women especially. It benefits economy and it benefits community at large, because there is less, when people can earn more, they rely less on assistance programs. When children go to daycare and preschool earlier, if they have any developmental issues, that's earlier to catch and to approach, so like, it's better for overall health and public health as well, right? So yes, of course. Unfortunately, I don't have one magic number for Humboldt, though, but yeah.
I really appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further? So I have a quick, oh, you have one, Scott?
No.
Oh, I have a quick question. So when you were saying, when you were mentioning the incomes of people and the percentages, you said 60% of the income is, you know, standard for California, was it 74, 76 for Humboldt, and then DHHS says that the income should be only 7%?
Spending. Spending on childcare, that's what DHHS says, yes, should not exceed 7% of your income.
And so, but what you're saying is that 60% of people's incomes is being spent on childcare at this time?
Absolutely, yes. And these are, those all sources are cited. They're all like, from either UC Berkeley studies or some other reports, yes, absolutely.
So I'm curious if DHHS is saying 7%. Do they have any ideas or plans on how to get to that place? Or is there a collaboration of people working together to kind of support that?
I wish I knew more, but unfortunately, I don't. The only thing I know is this is what people who make decisions think and teach the rest of the population, oh, this is how your life should be, and don't spend more than 7%. But again, policies and practices, unfortunately, are very far from each other, but yeah, but that number is definitely there, 7%.
That's very disturbing.
It is.
It's very disturbing.
That's why, that's why, like, it shows the urgency, right, and the importance.
I really appreciate you bringing that forward. And thank you so much for being here, I love you. Great to see you, Mayor Susan. Oh, Councilmember Fernandez, is your hand still up?
Yeah, and this was more a question for staff. It seems like you all have hard copies, so I'm hoping that I can get a digital one.
Yes, we will put one in your box.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Actually, anybody can get a copy of that digitally by going to humboldtchildcare.org, and if you go under, I think, childcare champions or advocacy, the report is there, so, anybody who's watching.
Great, well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Wow. Okay, and that brings us to public comment. This is the time for the members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak for public comment? Welcome.
Welcome. Thomas Stewart, Eureka, California. Eureka City Schools Board Meeting, October of last year, three questions. First question, why is soil or dirt being transferred from Albee Stadium to the soccer field next to Alice Burney School? Second question, do you have a permit to move the soil? Third question, and final question, is the soil contaminated? Or, I'm sorry, been tested? I'm not leaving the building without answers to the three questions. Board member raised, told me they could not answer the questions because of the Brown Act. And so I, after the meeting, two supervisors came over and told me that the next day they'd have the information. I said, "Isn't it here in the office?" They said, "Yes." I knew they didn't have, they don't know, I research a lot, I knew they didn't have permits to move anything out of Albee Stadium because of the state agency that regulates them. Okay. So I was arrested. I got a call from a person in a neighborhood three weeks ago, they were dumping dirt there again, it stinks, contains debris, and just a week ago, a man, or just a few, last week, a man with a metal detector found lead. Okay? This is an illegal transfer of dirt from Albee Stadium to soccer field. A very large semi truck, which dumped dirt on the opposite side of the field, left irregularly according to a neighbor in the neighborhood. That was the truck that killed the bicyclist on Harris and Union Street. You can go to Black Belt, Redhead of Black Belt, you can do Kim, anyway, her website, and do a search for bicycle caught under the wheel of a truck trailer, okay? If this was properly addressed last year, the gentleman might have been doing something wrong, because he's going against traffic, okay? But he wouldn't have died here. So now the trucks, some big, huge semis are going down the street next to Alice Burney. So if we have a parent or child killed, okay, or this debris is, the dust is blowing everywhere, okay, so the truck's all the way from Albee Stadium there. I'm gonna give you a picture of this. So the dirt on the wrong side here, where the truck went the wrong way, and then all of this new dirt, and then the last year's dirt, okay? So please do something, I'm gonna leave you with the contact number that the state agency gave me last year. I'm not a policeman for them, okay? So somebody needs to call them and explain to them what exactly I explained to you before some other people die, okay, or get sick. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on up, Joanne. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Joanne McGary, and I believe we're still the land of the free and the home of the brave. I want to talk of the free and the home of the brave. I want to talk about being free, being brave, and actions to help humanity. I spoke earlier this morning at the Board of Supervisors meeting about this same issue. So, being free, real quickly, I took the bus here from Arcata, and I just want to announce that for the summertime, the buses for young people and old people like me are free. So, take the bus and help the planet in that way, but also help the planet in terms of... We're celebrating 10 years of the Golden Rules relaunch, and next Saturday, the 14th, a lot of things happening on June 14th. But at 2:00 PM out at the boatyard, Zerlang Boatyard, they're going to celebrate the Golden Rule sailing for a nuclear-free future. And we know that it's what the first peace boat, and a historic... We're home harbor for that boat. And the people of the Golden Rule just announced that they are in solidarity with another peace boat that is now sailing across the Mediterranean Sea to the shores of Gaza, with Greta Thunberg among the 12 people on the boat to bring humanitarian aid. And what I am hoping, because I have a copy here of the ceasefire resolution that you and Arcata and the Board of Supervisors passed last year, we want this boat to have safe passage as it heads toward Gaza and make sure that they can break the blockade, end the siege, and deliver humanitarian aid to the people in great need there. So, anything you can do as a collective group in recognition of our Golden Rule boat and its solidarity with that to ensure safe passage. Just a few hours ago, the people on the boat said there was a drone sighted above the boat. It is in international waters. It is abiding by international law. And anything we can do to support Greta and the others on the Freedom Flotilla Coalition, please do what you can, and please come to the relaunch of the Golden Rule celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Let me lower that for you a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joanne, and thank you, councilpeople, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Karpani, and I first want to say thank you to councilperson Hernandez for sending his Calpers letter. And I am, again, going to urge the rest of you to please send your Calpers letter requesting them divest from the genocide. The ceasefire that you agreed to or that you passed was beautiful, but that's not enough. We need more. Joanne just explained about the aid boat going to Gaza. More has to be done to protect them. If you've seen a picture of it, it's really a tiny boat. It's only 12 people there. So, anything you can do to help with that. I'm feeling really sad, because when I've come here to speak, what I've been speaking with, speaking about, it feels like perhaps that our values are not in alignment with each other. The homeless resolution, or whatever you are calling it, when you passed that, that was very disappointing. I feel like when I'm yelling at you, it's not the best way. It's not who I want to be. And I really don't know what it will take for a genocide that we're watching now for, what, 21 months, will have enough of a meaning to make everybody do anything and everything that they can. One thing isn't enough to just say, I did that, because in the end, it's the children. They're the target. I don't know if you understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in chambers that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll go over to Zoom. Ellen?
Hi, City Council. I'm also calling tonight to ask you again to please send that letter to Calpers. You are all invested in Calpers as public employees, which means that you are all invested in genocide. And actually, genocide is no longer the correct word. We should be just calling it plainly a Holocaust, because that is what is happening. It is day 606 of this Holocaust. Fifty-eight Palestinians, at least, were killed in Gaza today. The Israeli army committed another massacre at the quote-unquote "aid site" that is being run by American mercenaries and the Israeli military. They killed 27 people today and wounded 90 today in Rafa, at the supposed aid distribution center, bringing the total death toll to at least 102 people in eight days. We've seen video after video of people explaining that they arrived, they were shot at, they didn't receive any aid. It's a total sham, and it is our sham. It is the United States and Israel hand in hand. And you, for all of our disagreements, I know that you are all good people and you want to do the right thing. All I'm asking you to do right now is send an email that's already written for you. That is your right as someone who's using Calpers, and I believe it is your duty. I don't, like Karpani, I don't know what else to say to you. People have been coming to these meetings, every single meeting, for 21 months, asking you to do something within your power, and this is within your power. You are invested in Calpers, you are invested in genocide, and you should have a problem with that. I just forwarded the email to you again tonight, so it will be at the top of your inbox. Please send that letter and confirm to all of us that you have done so on behalf of your own consciences, as well as on behalf of your constituents, who do not want our public employees to be invested in a Holocaust. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay. With that, we will close the public comment and move into our public hearings. Our public hearing tonight is a resolution confirming and ordering special assessments for unpaid garbage and recycling collection fees with Special Project Manager Protsker. Pratsker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robin Protsker, Environmental Project Manager with the Community Services Department, and tonight is the public hearing for the assessment of unpaid garbage fees from 2024. For a quick background, Eureka has mandatory curbside garbage and recycling, and it is the property owner's responsibility to comply with the ordinance, not the tenants. Delinquent accounts are to be collected in the manner described in California Government Code Section 25831, which establishes the procedure to record a lien or special assessment against a property. Delinquent accounts tonight are from 2024 and have been unpaid for a period of 60 or more days after the date upon which they were billed, and all property owners were sent a final notice on May 9th, which was not less than 10 days prior to the date of this hearing. Property owners also receive monthly notices of delinquent accounts. As of May 22nd, there are 233 properties on the list. Staff does receive returned final notices, and those property owners who did not receive that final notice will not be included in the final report sent to the county auditor. For the property owners that have received the final notification and have yet to resolve the unpaid balances associated with their property, they'll still have 20 days from tonight's hearing to make arrangements to pay if council approves staff's recommendation. So, with that, staff recommends that council hold a public hearing to hear any objections or protests, make adjustments as deemed just, and adopt a resolution of the city council providing for the collection of fees, and staff are available for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we will... Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is a drastic decrease in the amount of liens from last year. I think last year, we had just over 400. This year, it's 233. And I'm curious if there's any explanation or any insight that you could provide into how that's been achieved, why there might be a decrease.
I don't have any insight myself. I know General Manager Frank from Recology is here. I don't know if he has anything. Okay, come on up, Frank.
Hi there, welcome.
Honorable Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the council, Councilman Fernandez. Yeah, the frequency of outbound mailing has significantly increased over the last few years. I mean, working in partner with city staff, we've been able to centralize some of our mailing and increase the mailing, and then switching to a different APN tracking mechanism for Recology has improved the ability for us to update our records. And so, people are getting a lot more notices and taking a lot more opportunity to get those old debts resolved.
So, bottom line is there's been a better attempt at at least communicating or letting folks know that they might be behind or in arrears?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's going to continue to grow in the future.
Okay. And then, again, looking at last year compared to this year, I know that there's been... The overall amount, too, has decreased from, I think it was close to 200,000 last year and maybe just over 100,000 this year. But there's some wild variance between the lowest amount and the highest amount, one account, I think, being around like $3, with the highest being around 11,000. Again, any insight into how those have gotten as high as they?
There's some interesting stuff that you find out as you're going through individual accounts, and you see some folks that are kind of repetitive liens, where they kind of end up on the list every year. You know, it's as varied as you can imagine, from folks that have maybe inherited a business and inherited the trash bill, or someone who has gotten sick and gone to the hospital, and the trash bill may not be the first thing on their mind, to folks that just don't pay their trash bill every year and go to lien. So, it's kind of... It's as varied as you can imagine.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Okay, seeing no one, thanks for coming up. We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone here who's come to comment on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, we'll move it over to Zoom. Brittany?
Hi there. I'm Brittany Britton. I live in City Eureka as of August of 2024. There was no lien on the property that we purchased when we got the house for trash bills, but since then have received notices from Recology that our tenant, who is actually the previous owner who passed away in March of 2023, that we are in charge of her bills because there's a misunderstanding that she is our tenant. And so, we're stuck in this middle place of the law being interpreted that the current property owners are somehow landlords for a previous property owner who was a tenant. And there's no way to redirect that in some possible way. I'm still having conversations with Recology, but it's been difficult to have that conversation, because I just get quoted the law at me. And it wasn't on the purchase. When we purchased it, our title insurance is saying, like, we just got to wait or try to send letters with the deeds that say what's happening. But I do want to say that this is happening to other people. I'm hearing that from our title office, that people who are purchasing properties have backdated trash bills from previous owners or from, honestly, flippers who were owning the property in the meantime. And I don't know what's to be done about this, but it's difficult.
Brittany can go ahead and give the Community Services Department a call. We do deal with these situations, and we do have a resolution. So, it's unfortunate we didn't get to talk to you before this.
Yeah, I didn't realize who I needed to speak to. That's super helpful. Thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else.
So, with that, we'll close this public hearing and bring it back to council. Councilmember Castellano?
First, thank you, Project Manager Protsker, for offering us a solution and conversation around that. Really appreciate it. And I moved to hold a public hearing to hear any objections and protests and make adjustments as deemed just and adopt a resolution of the city council providing for the collection of fees.
Second. So, we have a motion in a second. Are there any comments, further comments? Okay, please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez has his hand raised.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, just before we move forward with this, of course, I know that staff had said that it was unfortunate. They were unable to connect with this particular public commenter, but they had also alluded to the fact that there are others that are in similar situations. And not to further put staff on the spot, but could you briefly give us some insight into what that resolution might be, or if that can be rectified? Because that does give me some pause in moving forward with this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. So, once those lien letters go out, we get lots of phone calls, and there are many scenarios where someone has purchased a property, and the bill was accrued prior to their purchase. And we do work with Recology to remove them from the lien list and send the previous account holder to collections. Even if we place a lien and then find out that's the scenario, we can remove the lien. So, it's not our policy to have new homeowners pay the bill from the previous owner. It's just the timing of how it works. So, we can work with Brittany on that, and anybody else who reaches out to us now or even months from now, we can remedy that.
Okay. And is it as simple as showing the purchase date and the deed, or is there something more bureaucratic?
We have access to a property ownership database where we can find out when the house was sold, and then we match that up to when the bill was accrued. And if all that information adds up, then that is how we move forward. So, I apologize to any customers who had Recology communicate otherwise, but we have been having quite a few of these scenarios the past few weeks and have dealt with them swiftly and have gotten rave reviews when we talk to folks. So, again, I'm sorry that that didn't happen with Brittany, but that is our policy.
I appreciate you following up with that. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. So, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay. This moves us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I believe there may be one item to be pulled. Is that correct? Councilmember Fernandez?
No, we're good.
We're good. Okay. So, Councilmember Conteras Deloche? Which one? F2. Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. So, if we could get a motion to approve the balance?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Five yes votes, motion carries minus F2.
Okay. And that leads us to the lateral replacement project 2025. Will that be Will that be with you?
I will take that. Um, so this is one of our annual bids that we put out related to the sewer lateral replacement. And I'm happy that we brought Director Willer here as well, just in case I can't field any of these questions. But, um, so the bid went out, um, we received responses prior to the bid going out because of the discussions that were had during the previous fee schedule hearing. We met, staff met with Humboldt Association Realtors, um, staff called and reached out to contractors trying to put this bid out. As a result of those conversations, we made some adjustments to the bid. What we did is, and I don't know if this is getting to the weeds, but prior bids that we had put out related to laterals, they would include what's called the T. The T is the point of connection between a lateral and the main. And when we did those previously, we made that a part of the project in the bid. So in other words, the cost of replacing the lateral as well as that T connector was also in there. After discussions with the contractors, they felt that that could help with the price and the costs associated with it, which in turn would help with the fee and lieu costs. We removed that as a part of this bid. Um, we put it out, um, we received, um, responses and, uh, Mobley Construction was declared the lowest bidder. The next step in the process, this item here is just to award it to the lowest responsive bidder. But the next step in the process is to go through the numbers, um, calculate the averages based on this bid and then coming back to council with the fee and lieu, um, for the next fiscal year, um, once that's, uh, calculated. So if there's any questions, staff's available for.
Do we have any questions for City Manager Slattery? Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
I don't have a question, but I had had constituents ask and you'd given me a really good explanation. And so I wanted to have you do that on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, and we do plan, um, right now, the tentative plan is to bring the budget back to council, um, at the next meeting. And then the fee schedule would come in the first meeting of July. Prior to that meeting, we do plan on meeting with the subcommittee with Humboldt Association Realtors to have a similar conversation with them prior to that.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, we'll look over to Zoom. See anyone?
I see no one on Zoom.
With that, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion and a vote.
I move to declare Mobley Construction the low bidder for bid number twenty twenty-five dash eight, annual lateral replacement project twenty twenty-five and award bid number twenty twenty-five dash eight to Mobley Construction for the amount of one million twenty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty dollars and approve one million seventy-five thousand dollars for the construction, which includes approximately five percent contingency.
Second.
Any comments? Please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. This brings us to legislative action correspondence. Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yeah, um, there was, there is something. Um, let me pull it up really quick so you don't have to. It is an assembly bill, um, and it's crossed over. Let me see what the number is. Hold on one second. I think it's thirteen seventy-eight. Yeah, it's AB thirteen seventy-eight. Um, this is sponsored by, um, Assemblyman, uh, Chris Rogers, which is our assembly person. This bill, uh, is to expand and clarify agreements between, um, social services and Indian tribes. I'm not sure how we're, um, council is that historically there's, uh, been, uh, a disproportionate number of native children end up in foster care. Um, and there's a number of reasons why that happens, but a lot of it is inequity and disparities that shouldn't be there. There's the Indian Child Welfare Act or ICWA. Um, there's a number of laws that have kind of been passed over time to kind of try to address some of these inequities, but there are other things this bill, um, would, uh, require, um, that there be other, there's a, how do they put it? It would allow tribal agencies to receive administrative funds and they could use legal representation. It would give them to be able to, it would allow them to use family-first prevention techniques so that they could try to prevent children from going into the system at all. Um, and they could remain with their families or re- remain within their tribes. Um, so, uh, and it actually is a bipartisan, uh, supported bill.
Councilmember Moulton?
I just have a question. Are you familiar with this type of legislation? Do you know if it prioritizes, um, sibling pairings or extended families?
I don't know, um, if it, I, I know typically in foster care, they always are going to, let me, actually, let me make sure I understand what you mean, that they would stay together when they're placed? Or, or that they would be placed with siblings?
If there's a question between, um, placing siblings together or placing siblings apart because there's an extended family for one option versus the other. I mean, you know, lots of families are mixed and blended and, you know, one person's extended family may not be the other's. I'm just curious because I've, I've come across scenarios in my own family where, um, siblings were separated because one was a member of tribe and the other wasn't. I'm just curious if you know.
I, I don't know. And the text of the bill, I, I got to read the text of the bill today and it didn't seem to, um, it, it didn't seem to address any of that. Um, and I know typically in the foster care system, you know, the priority is on trying to keep the siblings together, um, but that does get sticky really fast.
Sure.
Really quickly, which is just one more enormous problem with the system.
I would still support it, but thank you for, yeah, trying to answer.
So Camp, Councilmember Fernandez, we have three thumbs up here, four. So you have a, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this will take us to future agenda items. Councilmember Moulton?
Um, I'd like for staff to give us some information on Calpers investments relating to the genocide in Palestine, uh, or any weapons manufacturing. I'm curious, um, what that actually have. I'd like to point out that not all employees are invested in Calpers, um, just for the public. But I'm curious, what Calpers has invested in the situation or weapons manufacturing, uh, with the intent of then potentially asking for a letter requesting divestment in those. But I'd like some information on what they are first. I'm just asking for a report. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so we've got thumbs up all around. Yep, all around. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, it's Pride Month and so I don't know if we have a proclamation on our next agenda, but I would love to have a proclamation, whether someone else brought us one or not. And, uh, several years ago, uh, council members dressed in kind of rainbow colors. Uh, I think that would be really fun to do again, just putting it out there. And then I am a big fan of the golden rule. Um, and I would love to have either a proclamation or a presentation about what they're up to and kind of celebrating their achievements, um, come before us.
Just for clarity, I assume that's for both items.
Yeah. Is your hand up, Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes. May I?
Yes, you may.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, I'd like to have, uh, a report, if any, available on, uh, our use of Avelo Airlines and then possibly not.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, Councilmember Fernandez. That, we'll get to that next. Did you have a thumbs up or a thumbs down for what Councilmember Castellano brought forward?
Oh, that was a thumbs up and then.
Okay, great. Now, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, uh, going back to that then, is asking, uh, for our use of Avelo Airlines and then possibly not, uh, using them any further until they're no longer in contract with ICE. I can't see anyone, so I have no idea what's going on.
So you got four, you got four thumbs up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything further? Great. So this will take us to, uh, city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we are going to have an update on the Fresh Start program that Director Millar had brought to your guys' attention, um, at a previous budget, um, discussion. So, welcome, Director Millar.
Good evening. Can you share it?
Derek, can you share it?
Okay.
So I requested to do a city, city manager report tonight because of the timing, uh, with the budget as well as, uh, the deadline of, uh, June thirtieth to initiate a fresh start. This isn't good news. Uh, so after working with Calpers, um, let me back up a little bit. So, um, so what is Fresh Start? So Fresh Start is an option that Calpers provides to cities or municipalities to essentially change the schedule of their unfunded liability payments. Here's a graph of our future unfunded liability payments. Uh, this includes the city as well as Humboldt Bay Fire. I'm gonna zoom in. But the reason why I started to look into this, uh, option that they provide is because of the schedule of payments going into the future. You'll notice this big increase, uh, between the two entities. Uh, we're looking at over one point eight million, in above what we're, where we're at today. So obviously, if they offer, uh, scenarios where we avoid this increase, uh, I was gonna take advantage or at least look into it. So, over the past few weeks, we've been trading different models about different scenarios that, uh, I would hope to achieve. Uh, unfortunately, when, uh, they were working on the model, um, last week, they identified in a, uh, an error or an assumption that wasn't correct. So, uh, that orange line was what I thought we could do. But that purple line is what, uh, when they came back with other options, uh, that purple line represented, you know, the best that we could do. Uh, it certainly, um, reduces the impact of that, uh, growth line, the blue line. Uh, but unfortunately, what that would mean is it would be another half a million dollars per year. Even though it's a flat line, it would start to impact our reserves. Uh, and if we look at our forecast for general fund reserves, um, if I compare, uh, our current, situation, which is that growth, uh, versus what Calpers is offering us, the current situation actually impacts reserves less than, uh, going to that modified payment schedule. Uh, and because I believe it's better today to keep, uh, money in the bank or in reserves due to uncertainty in the, the economy, uh, when I come back to you, uh, at the next council meeting, I'm going to alter the numbers that shows no intention of doing a Calpers fresh start. This isn't something that goes away this fiscal year. Uh, we can continue to look at strategies to help with this, situation. A few years back, we looked at pension bonds. Uh, I don't think we'll be looking at pension bonds anytime soon, but because of the size of this debt, we will continue to look for strategies that helps minimize the impact. So that concludes my report for tonight.
Great. Do we have any questions for Director Millar? No questions. Well, thank you for that report. We appreciate you. And that will take us to council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Contreras Deluge.
Is it because I oofed? It's been so long that I'm, I literally don't, um, so many meetings, uh, with constituents, um, leading up to previous council sessions. And I'm going back and trying to see what kinds of stuff I'm gonna miss. I'm in a, I'm not gonna remember something, I just know it. But, um, and had you given me a second, we might have heard something. I do have a question really quick. Actually, no, I'll ask afterward, sorry. Um, just a lot of meetings with constituents and I just did something, I think, two days ago and I'm trying to remember what that meeting was. I couldn't begin to tell you. I'm sorry, I've been busy and I have been busy with council business. But I could not tell you what without having a chance to look at my calendar first. My apologies.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you. It's been like, what, four weeks or something since we've done this? So, um, oh boy, uh, had a JPA meeting not too long ago, about a month ago, I guess. County two-by-two meeting, county and, uh, city staff or city council members, we met. We had an, I had an RCEA meeting and I got to see some of the kinetic sculpture race, not, just when they were coming back in the Eureka, which was great. Went to the Forest Moon Festival. Want to thank zoo staff. It was a super fun event. Had a great time there and it, and they're doing a great job, um, making our zoo. I think, what did, uh, Jim tell me that we went from forty thousand, um, visits a year to right around a hundred and sixty or a hundred and eighty thousand? Is that right?
Yes, since, uh, Skywalk.
Yeah, since the Skywalk.
It's maintained pretty good levels since too.
That's mind blowing. That's really cool that our little zoo has that, um, kind of, uh, visitor ship there. And then, uh, lastly, I, we had a Beta Zoo, uh, Trail Town Hall meeting, which was amazing turnout. Lots of people, a lot of great questions. Staff did a, uh, outstanding job of presenting the project and talking to people and, and hearing concerns and, um, yeah, great turnout. Really appreciate the community for coming out and expressing their, their concerns and, and getting to know more about the project as we move along. So, love to do those town halls are great and people really appreciate the ability to kind of talk to us and, and talk to staff. So, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Moulton?
Hi, thank you. Uh, yeah, it's been a while, so I'm gonna run down this. I've been doing work with community groups to try and get them engaged with our Citizen Oversight on Police Practices Board. Folks from the Bi-Cock Park community or those experiencing homelessness, trying to get advocates to work, uh, with the board, help build better relationships. Um, met with the Realtors Association, uh, attended mornings on Main Street, just lovely seeing all the business folks down there. Come bend my ear. Attended a Eureka City Schools two-by-two, uh, JPA board meeting for Humboldt Bay Fire. I attended the kinetic sculpture race. I did see all of the race, um, because that's my jam. Uh, the race is a great example of Humboldt County culture. It combines, um, ecotourism and athleticism and artistry and like general kooky fun nature of our community, getting us national attention. There were reporters there from all over the country. And I just wanted to shout out to the Team Pedal Snappers. And this year there were, uh, five, at least five different youth teams, all youth teams, high schoolers, who are engineering and racing for glory and that is how we're gonna keep it, this tradition going. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Castellano, for mentioning that it is Pride Month. Just, uh, it's good to be an ally. It's good to be supportive. Um, there are plenty of places in our country and even our community where not everyone is safe simply walking around and existing and just saying, hi, I see you, I support you, I love you, you belong here, uh, can make someone feel the difference between feeling like everybody, um, everybody around them. Can make someone feel the difference between feeling like everybody, um, everybody around them wants to hurt them. And feeling like they're maybe a part of, of the community. Uh, and I just wanted to point out, there was a commenter who was lamenting that the camping ordinance passed. And the camping ordinance did not pass. Um, in case she was worried about that. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay, let's see. Um, I, after that long meeting, I did travel to Sacramento. Um, it's kind of council adjusment, but it, it's for a really, uh, on the board of Cal nonprofits. I want to thank some constituents and other electives reached out to wish me a safe trip and make sure I made it okay. And uh, thanks for that. And I want to congratulate Food for People and Carly Robbins and Humboldt Casa and Amber Anderson. For being uh, our local recipients of nonprofit of the year there down in Sacramento. So that was really great. And I have attended, and yeah, and just thanks for all of the work they're doing in the community. I attended the Humboldt Transit Authority Finance Committee meeting. It's budget, it's budget time of year. So all of your local JPAs are talking about their budgets. And the Humboldt Waste Management Authority budget, uh, special, uh, budget meeting. And then also um, the Eureka Main Street Economic Vitality Committee meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, I've, I've been continuing to meet with advocates for the homeless, or for the homeless and the unhoused. Uh, I know we've rescheduled a few times our two-by-two with Eureka City Schools. And we have an upcoming one with the Chamber of Commerce, I think the same day as our June 17th meeting. So uh, very, very similar to everyone else, staying engaged with our constituents, but very much. Councilmember Contreras Deluge, I'm not looking at my calendar at the moment, so just know that I'm staying busy.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Contreras Deluge, did you have a time to look at your calendar? Did you want to add anything?
No ma'am, just listening to the rest of you.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll just share a few things. I was really grateful and honored to be able to attend the world's renewal ceremony out with the Weah tribe, uh, out at the reservation. It's always such a intense and spiritual and moving time. It's always wonderful to hang out too. I just, I, it's so grateful to maintain those relationships that we've built over time. I too, I attended the kinetic sculpture race. I ran for Kimberly, uh, for Rutabaga Queen. As Kimberly Kindness. And I was so grateful because for years since I became a council member. I really wanted to bring forward a kindness initiative to our city. They did one in Anaheim many, many years ago and the Dalai Lama came and um, we actually wrote to the Dalai Lama to see if he'd come to Eureka. But he was too old to travel, so that didn't work out. So it was nice to be able to do that through the Rutabaga Queen venue or through the kinetics. Um, I didn't win and I'm so grateful. I will be a princess for life. So that was always wonderful and just, you know, be spreading kindness as I tend to do and try to do. Because I love our community and I love people. It's been so long that I just did want to report that we did have our um, mental health town hall. And we had Joe Reed here. He came. We had two different panels. It was very well attended. Um, and very important topic, um, discussing mental health and stigma reduction. Which is critical in healing for, on so many levels in so many ways. And then I missed the Forest Moon Festival. I actually was out at senior prom with a former student of mine. Which was a lot of fun and uh, it's what we do. So anyway, um, I met with a lot of people. I talked to a lot of people, which I generally do anyway. And um, I just, I'm so thankful for this city and the people in it. And the way that we are able to communicate and work together and to have fun. And the season now is to get out and be with our community. So I would really encourage you to do that. Friday Night Market starts this Friday. The concerts are going to be starting. There's just so many things to do outdoors. It's fabulous. It's gorgeous. Enjoy each other. And with that, we're adjourned.